Okay, 7:06 PM.
Yes. So, Brian, did you want to give a, open this up to the public now?
Oh, absolutely. For the evening of July 15th, 2021, in the Irving Planning Board meeting, the town of Irving will be using a product called GoToWebinar to host the meeting. In accordance with Mass General Law, the meeting is being recorded and all content shared will be recorded as part of the permanent record. And questions from the public are answered at the discretion of the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience tonight?
Yes, you, as of right now, it appears you have two attendees. It looks like David Broll and Julian Mendoza.
Okay. I know David's interested in the pod. Julian, what would they be interested in? Do we know?
I'm unmuting both attendees so that they can speak up as necessary and then they can self mute themselves when they're not looking to speak. So both should have access now.
Hello. Hi there. Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself, but I was muted by the system, apparently. I'm Julian. I'm from the Greenfield Recorder. Just trying to be a fly on the wall tonight. It's a pleasure to meet you all. And yeah, don't pay me much mind. I'm just, no, recording what I can. And yeah, I'm new to the recorder, so thank you for having me.
We'll be on good behaviors tonight.
Just do your thing. I'm at best.
Yep. Hi, can you all hear me? This is David. Yeah, so I, I, just like Julian, I'd like to sit in and I'm interested in a couple of things and there might be a few things that I could share if need be, but I'm really happy to be able to attend this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move on to the first agenda item, which is to approve minutes from some past meeting. We haven't been able to. Deb was good enough to do the last meeting we had in May. I believe June, we skipped over because we weren't sure how to have the meeting in person or go-to webinar. And I, maybe Brian, you could briefly say, where are we with going forward with in-person meetings? Is that something we, we can do or?
The state of emergency officially ended on June 14th. The legislature and the governor did sign an amendment, the permanent amendment to the open meeting law, but it will allow remote meetings like you are conducting tonight through April 1st of 2022.
Okay.
Is an option. The Select Board has, has terminated the state of emergency for Irving as well, effective June 14th. And so as a result, the Select Board is okay with boards and commissions returning to in-person meetings with the understanding that people still need to practice safe practices. So encouraging some social distancing. If folks are unvaccinated, the board is still asking folks to follow CDC and mask DPH guidelines and continue to wear a mask. And all the buildings are posted for that. So really, the Senior Community Center and the library are likely the two meeting locations where we could accommodate the public and members of boards and commissions and still provide sufficient spacing. And obviously, those meeting rooms can only hold, handle so many meetings at any given time. So boards and commissions would like to return to in-person, they can. But we do ask that they plan in advance so that we can make sure that the facility managers can appropriately accommodate those requests in a timely manner.
Great. That's good news. Thank you.
Yep.
So Deb did the, I think Deb, you submitted today, the ones from, it was May of this year? Does that sound right? Can we, could we go through those?
Which ones would you like me to put on the screen first?
Deb's from the last meeting in May.
There were two that Deb sent.
She sent quite a few, but the, the last, the newest one, I'd like to go backwards in time.
Give me one moment.
So you said, Deb, you did more than the two that I saw?
Um, there was, I believe, a total of five on that email, Moonlight.
On that same email?
Yeah, there was five attachments, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't know how come I only got two. I'll have to go back and recheck.
Thank you, Deb. Last time, too.
No problem.
This one I'm opening says, May 2021. Deb's minutes is up, the set you like open?
Yes, please.
You're on the screen in just a moment.
Thank you, Brian. That looks good. We can read through this really quickly.
Okay.
The last meeting president was Mike Schaefer, George Moonlight Davis, Deborah Smith. And this is, we held it at 6:06 and we had Mariah Kurtz and Peggy Sloan from FERCOG here to answer some questions. First thing we're, we talked to Peggy about was AUD, Auxiliary Dwelling Unit Discussion. Peggy explained what a, I'm sorry, ADU was and took questions from the board. Deb asked if FERCOG had a draft bylaw the board could work from. Peggy explained they did not. Some communities simply list requirements and table. Others have separate bylaws for them. She could provide us with examples of other towns. But most towns only define two types and attach ADU and detached ADU. Peggy asked what her intent was in drafting a bylaw. Mariah explained we want to make sure we had proper definitions and we're not missing anything important. Peggy pointed out the key points to address our size, parking and owner occupation. Deb asked Peggy if she could clarify the difference between family dwelling and attached ADU. Peggy stated, there really isn't one from a building aspect of its point of view. Differences are mostly aesthetic. For example, a two-family typically has two district front door entrances. Where an ADU would have a shared entrance or less obvious, obvious entry. That looks good. She did mention Deerfield as one of the towns that she thought had drafted a good ADU. Draft. So I, I set that out. Maybe we can look at that later. Affordable housing discussion. Mariah explained how housing needs are identified and some of the steps that can be taken to meet them, such as requiring new developments to have a certain percentage of units to be affordable housing. She encouraged Mike to attend the CHAPA. Yeah, I did go to that meeting. I, I, and it was, it was interesting. I can tell, talk a little bit about it. Mariah knows it a lot better. Due to a loss of the quorum, the... Yep.
Is, is CHAPA the correct abbreviation?
It looks right to me. I, I don't know enough to tell you it's wrong. Yeah. It's the group out of Boston that goes around the country, the state, helping people need housing needs. I mean, Brian, do you know if that's the right abbreviation?
It's the correct abbreviation. If you want the organization name, I can give it to you.
Yes, could you, Brian?
Yep, it's the Citizens with an apostrophe after the S, Housing and Planning Association.
Thank you. Okay.
Housing and Planning Association.
Correct. And then just, if, if you don't mind, a friendly amendment, you may want to consider, it looks like the heading on your minutes just have a previous date on them.
Yes, I caught that and I also caught a spelling mistake of the word shared.
So update the, to... What was the date? What should have been the date on that for?
I believe May 20th.
5/20/21. Okay, would anybody make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept, to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second. All in favor? Could you just say your name and yay, please?
Moonlight Davis, yay.
Deb, a.
Sunhee, a.
Mike Schaefer, yay. Okay, the minutes were unanimously accepted as amended. Okay.
So the next, you would like, would be which ones?
Uh, the one I did, I think.
Looks like April, maybe? No.
April.
April 14th, maybe?
Yeah. And then Deb, just, the procedure is you're gonna make the corrections and then sign it and give it to Dick. Is that what we're doing with these or how are we?
Yes, for the minutes that I've taken, I will make the corrections. I'll sign them and I'll drop them off to Dick.
Okay. These were the minutes that we had from 4:14. We reviewed the mail. A lot of neighboring towns are doing quite a bit with marijuana businesses. Also extending the 5G in another town and such engineering of Northfield moving to Orange. Sunhee's minutes were approved, reviewed after being opened by Mariah. I couldn't read it, but comments regarding the March meetings included the following amendments. So Sunhee, if you could make these changes to your minutes and then sign them and get them to Dick. Jacob Smith ran the GoToWebinar, not Brian Smith. And also Mike Schaefer made a motion to take back, not bake, I think, request to vote on that. Minutes were, so I've, I've got one misspelling. And minutes were approved as amended by the planning board members. So, so that gets rid of your minutes, Sunhee, from previous if you make those changes. Deborah Smith also presented minutes for review from older meetings. The minutes from February 4, 2021 were reviewed and approved as amended. I hope you, I can't remember all the amendments we made on that, Deb. There were, there were some that, I think you wrote them down. I'm pretty sure you did.
I have, I'm sure I have it in my notes.
And then there, there were three older minutes that Deb provided us from 2018 and 19. I read through those. We, it is important, I think, that we approve them and get them filed. So could, could you bring up the latest of that? It would be for 18, 19.
You want those up now or are you finishing reviewing?
I'd like to, I'd like to get them reviewed because I went through them and I didn't see anything wrong with any of them, but I just want to make sure everybody else is okay with it.
Mike, just so we don't forget, can we finish reviewing the set of minutes first and then move to those?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I got, I got late. Thank you, Deb. Okay. Please review below sent by Mariah after meeting. It would be good to be consistent with all the new regarding marijuana bylaws. So Mariah had a very difficult time combining the two tables and she could only do it in a screenshot. And I cut and pasted it into this. It, it was kind of to make sure we're consistent with what was there before with what is, is what we were proposing, I guess, in red. So maybe we could go back to this when we talk about the marijuana bylaw, if that's okay. It's, I, I don't know if I should have put it in the minutes or not. It was, it was done post-meeting. Because we couldn't get it done during the meeting very easily. So can we, Brian, can we just come back to this one? We do talk about the marijuana bylaw, if we do later. We reviewed frontage on PUDs, planned unit developments. Mariah was able to confirm all PUD locations had over 500 feet, except she did say it was one lot on the French King that only had a 25-foot frontage that goes back into a house. And she wanted to make sure I noted that in the minutes. Does that, I think that captures it okay though, doesn't it? Or? Uh, we reviewed the PUD map as redone last meeting was the original being viewed. I was still concerned about the wetlands developments at renovators. Moonlight suggested neighbors be involved in the proposal. The proposed PUD was extended past CV to include other construction seen from area photos. This was difficult to see and Mike requested the planning board be able to do a site visit if possible of the proposed PUDs and the others. Brian Smith to try to make arrangements after Moonlight returns in the eight, which we did do. Updates to zoning maps were not covered. A little was done across from Irving paper where CV was extended state forests as noted by Brian. This I see has been kind of corrected on the updated maps. Mariah updated flood plain bylaw. This can be put on hold. Mariah thought it would be a couple of years before required after new digital flood plain maps are available within a year. Also, it was recommended at a recent seminar, the flood plain manager be a full-time employee, town employee if possible. Trying to keep some stability in it. We didn't get to the special permit and site plan. French King solar connection route to Brian to check on the status. I think that's, is that all of it? Okay. Uh, approach to bring amending bylaws to town meeting. Brian suggested having town council give advice on how to present changes on vote. She has much experience. It was still decided to wait a few months, July, August, when the board has agreed to amendments. Business cards. Brian made up some new cards. I did get them. Next meeting was Thursday, May 20th, which we postponed. And that was the one Peggy was at and meeting adjourned at 9:02. Any, I think I have to change back, bake to back. Anything else I missed?
I didn't catch anything.
I'll do that. Then I'll do the same thing. I'll sign it and give a copy to Dick, too. Is that correct, Brian? Dick Newton, you want us to give these to?
Yeah, once you have adopted and they've been signed by whomever took them, they should be delivered to Dick and he'll put them on permanent records.
All right, good. All right. Thank you. So now can we go back to Deb's older ones?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept these as amended.
Oh, make, oh, I'll second it. All in favor? Please say your name and aye.
Sunhee, aye.
Deb, aye.
Moonlight, aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. Unanimously accepted as revised, amended. Okay. Thank you, Deb, for keeping me honest there.
Twice.
Okay, the next ones coming up should be April 18th of 2019?
Correct. And I, I, I did read through them. I couldn't remember that far back to be truthful, so.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but I went through all the minutes I took for both 2018 and 2019 and couldn't find records anywhere of us approving these before. So I think they were just stragglers that somehow got missed.
Uh, I went through, at that time, there was a Wheelock Road extension. I, and it was an affordable housing seminar that I went to. There, there were some different options. Different towns use. Leverett has, uses a fund to help people purchase houses. And then it keeps that house at a lower price. If they do sell it, it can't go up a certain percentage. Survey is being sent to Brian and Jackie regarding Irving's housing information. That must have been from FERCOG. Then there was a mass housing seminar at Devon's, if anybody was interested last year. I didn't go to that. Then we adjourned the meet, oh, I'm sorry. Motion was made and seconded by Deb voting it during at 7:45. And then the next meeting date, May 16th, respectively. I didn't see anything wrong with that, Deb. I, the only thing I noticed was the minutes up above, and we reviewed. If you could go to the top again, Brian. There, we reviewed minutes from 3:21, 19. So those were accepted as amended. So I, I don't know if those have been put in yet with Dick or not, but could you check on that or?
Dick has everything but these three sets of minutes.
Oh, okay.
I mailed him everything fixed for these. That's how I found that these presets weren't.
I got.
So are they approved? They're not approved yet?
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Sunhee, aye.
Deb, aye.
Moonlight, aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. Thank you. Minutes were unanimously accepted.
Next I have for you, it looks like October 15th of 2018?
Yep.
You're on the screen momentarily.
I feel like I'm testing everyone's memory.
I, I don't remember three years ago, Deb. I'm sorry. Chair, Jacqueline Bowden, Sunhee, myself and Deborah Smith. You weren't here that day, Moonlight, for some reason. Uh, the joint meeting with the board of selectmen called to order at 7:00 PM. The joint meeting adjourned at 7:57. The planning board resumed their meeting at 8:00. Uh, on the, on the motion made by Mike and seconded, the minutes of the 6:07, 18 were approved as corrected with one app to Deb Smith. On the motion made by Mike, the Sunhee minutes of 6:21, 18 were approved with one app to Deb Smith. Public library change of views. Please see attached board of selectmen meeting minutes. And we don't have to look at those, do we? Or?
I didn't attach them, no.
Jackie.
I give them to Dick, but I don't have them here right now.
Jackie has been notified by Frank Holmes that the detention basin location, the silver panel location had shifted slightly to the wetland delineations. That's on Mountain Road. After reviewing, the planning board did not feel the changes were significant enough to warrant a action. I don't think that's ever come to fruition, that whole project, right? Brian, that, that's, that's been put on hold, right?
Correct.
On a motion made by Devon, seconded by Mike, the planning board voted unanimously to adjourn. And the very next planning board was March 22nd, 2018. I, I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Actually, my name, oh, then, my name has to be S-O-N instead of S-U-N.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sunhee.
It's okay.
I will go through and get that corrected.
I'll make a motion to make the, accept the minutes as amended.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Sunhee, aye.
Moonlight, aye.
Deb, aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. Unanimously approved as amended. I think we got one more, Brian.
Next one I've got for you all looks like April 19th of 2018?
Yes, I think that's the last one.
She's on the screen momentarily.
This is a big thing off my chest getting all these, Deb, I tell you. It's a lot of them. Okay, you are. 14, 2018, Chair Jacqueline Bowden, myself, Sunhee and Deborah Smith. Again, Moonlight, you weren't there that day. On a motion made by Mike and seconded by Sunhee, the planning board voted, accept the minutes of 2:15, 18. On a motion made by Deb and seconded by Sunhee, the planning board accepted the minutes of 3:22, 18. I abstained. I probably wasn't present. I did. There was an interesting thing and Brian, maybe I can ask you. At the FERCOG meeting last time, they, they didn't have, they had a guy who wasn't at the meeting and normally we always abstain from reviewing the minutes. And he corrected it and said, you don't have to abstain if you weren't at the meeting. You can still vote on them. Do you know if that's true?
That's correct. My experience is that most people who aren't present tend not to feel comfortable voting on minutes that they personally didn't participate in. But there's no rule saying that you can't, you're a voting member, so there's no rule saying you can't vote on matter before you today.
Right. I didn't know that last week, so, or a couple of weeks ago. And then on a motion made by Mike and seconded by Sunhee, the planning board voted to accept the minutes of 4:15, 18. Jackie abstained. Notice of special permit and site plan approval for organic. Oh, these are just mail. For premises, 253 Miller's Road. Notice, public hearing, Orange, regarding special permit May 1st regarding permit for Main Street by John. By John Surski to buy, sell, repair automobiles. In town of War, public hearing notice, April twenty-sixth at seven to consider amending section eight of the bylaw. Of the annual meeting, which prohibits two or more inoperable motor vehicles to allow enforced by non-criminal. Deposition. I don't, Department of Environmental Protection letter regarding local planning board responsibilities, chapter nineteen, general license. And then an A and R for the French King Highway. Under Mark and Alter Johnson, on a motion made by Devon, seconded by Son Hee, the planning board. You notice, vote to approve the A and R for Mark and. Alter Johnson from A, for Mark and Alter Johnson in Form A for Daniels Griss. I don't remember all that. Any other business? Like, would like the, Jackie, follow up a letter to. B O H for private club smoking indoors for pot. This was before the marijuana bylaw went through, I believe. But at that time, there were some. I don't know, clubs that were allowing people to smoke, I think marijuana, and. We wanted to find out what was going on with that. Uh, and the motion made by Son Hee and seconded by Deb, and planning voted unanimously adjourned at seven fifty-fourty-nine. And the next meeting was May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven P M. Structurally submitted by Deborah. Uh, those were good to me. Did we see anything that we needed to change?
Yeah, I have to correct Son Hee's name.
All right, you got it right some of the time. All right, so as amended, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Moonlight, aye.
Son Hee, aye.
Deb, aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. Unanimously accepted as amended, thank you. All right, Brian, good job, we got through.
I think you have one more. Does, uh, February fourth, twenty-one sound correct? Is that the last?
Oh, that was done in my, uh, my minutes, we already approved that one as amended.
Okay, okay.
But I don't remember all the amendments, hopefully.
Okay. Then that takes care of everything that I was sent.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brian.
Awesome. Well, that was a big, to get that done. Okay, mail, I just got a letter from Furcog, they're looking, I've been the Furcog rep. For the planning board for the last. I don't know, four years, five years maybe, but it used to be really good, they had. In person with pizza and salads and cookies and. Now it's a Zoom meeting, so it's not quite as good as it used to be, but if anybody would like to take my place. I'd be, I'd welcome, I could sit down. Any volunteers?
Not yet, but I'd like to hear more about it. How many times do you have meetings, Zoom meetings or whatever?
I think. It's about six or seven times a year, uh. It, it's, it's not consistent, but, but it's about every two months and, uh.
On different days of the same day?
For instance. This Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, uh, from six to eight. And, uh, what they talked about at the last meeting quite a bit, it was the Deerfield River going through Conway. It's quite interesting, the, the flood plains. And where the river wants to go don't match up, so. They're, they're trying to figure out how to work with. The state and towns along the Deerfield River. To even purchase some of the land where it's gonna flood. And let it go more to its natural. Place, so it was quite interesting. But. They weren't sure that, if they were gonna be able to make a lot of headway with it, with all the regulations. So they talk about topics, like they talk about. The railroad going mostly from, uh. New York City up to Vermont, but I just read in the paper recently that they're beginning to talk again about Boston to, uh. North Adams, which would be more. What we wanna, I would like to see, you know, and then you could have people commute from Boston to Greenfield via train. So. I don't, I didn't hear anybody want to volunteer for that, I, I, I really don't want.
About it. I, I seriously was thinking about it. I was, I wanted to hear more and, and what the commitment was like because, you know.
Well, you, you, they want you to go to every meeting if you can, I, I make most of them, uh. So they're in the. They were in the Furcog be, building down by the train station, that's where they met in person, but now it's, it's via Zoom. I have to fill a paperwork out, Moonlight, do you want me to put you down as a, the next?
Yeah, but if you need a break on it, yes, I'll do it.
It's a good group of people. All right, thank you. And then, uh, the only other things were old business for, like, um. Z B A meetings in Turners and, or, a lot from Orange, but nothing that. It's all gone by, by now. Okay. I did. I, maybe we should pass over the A U D review bylaws until Mariah was gonna try to take what you had, Deb. And, and put it into some. Format, I haven't seen that, have you, or?
No, and I believe she's gone vacation.
Right, so why don't we table that until she has a chance to do what she wants to do? And I did, I, I did put in. The Deerfield draft one, and it was pretty simple, could you bring that up, Brian? I just want to show the. What they, they ended up doing, uh, they went by special permit pretty much across the board. Which is, I think, what we were kinda going in that direction too.
Mike, did you send that by email?
Yeah. Would have been yesterday, I think I sent it to you. Or I, I meant to, if I didn't.
No, you did, it was on a separate email. Here, it should be on the screen right now.
Okay, so. This just tells you what accessory apartment bylaw is. Uh, but I kinda, we could skip right to the bottom of it, and I, I just wanted to kinda show you the, the table they came up with. So. Accessory apartments that are contained within an existing structure, that was by right, I guess, all the way across. That are, if they're attached to an existing primary single-family dwelling unit, but. That require structural modifications or expansion, it's by special permit all the way across. And then if it's in a detached structure or on the same lot as a primary single-family dwelling unit, it's by special permit all the way across, so. I think that was the direction we were heading in, uh, but, you know, that's, that's what they've got for. And we can wait until Mariah gets back to do more on that. Anybody have any questions? Or any, anything they want to add? All right. Uh, yeah, we're done, done with that, thanks. Okay. So, Brian, maybe you can update us on the French King Solar Project, uh, what's going on?
The only thing I'm aware of, my understanding is that it's still at a bit of a standstill, and there seemed to be some confusion. You originally had received a draft of a site plan amendment, and you had originally put it on an agenda, I think, two months ago. To consider the, the site plan amendment, and then the day before, we were notified that they weren't prepared to submit the final amendment. We've been in a bit of a holding pattern, and then recently I was contacted by Mass D O T. Who, um. They were of the understanding that for some reason, the water commissioners, which is the Select Board of Irving. Had prohibited a, uh, a second access point off of Route Two. So I very pointedly responded to them and, and made it very clear that the water commissioners did no such thing. Um, the special permit process, as you're aware, is outlined in your zoning bylaw. And the water commissioners follow the exact same criteria, so there was a question about impacts to Route Two. And the water commissioners in their special permit just noted that at the, at the time, the proposed plans did not call for. Any other access to, uh, the property other than what currently exists. It wasn't listed as a condition of the special permit, uh, that they could not, so. I just pointed, uh, pointedly responded that the, the water commissioners had not prohibited it, they just acknowledged that there was no request at the time. And nobody has formally come forward to ask. If they needed to amend their special permit or anything of that such, so. Other than that correspondence, the town has received nothing formally from the proponent. I'm not sure really what's going on beyond that. It just seems like there's a little bit of confusion on their end. But there's nothing from the town in terms of requests that have not been answered or, or requests that have not been processed, so.
All right, thank you, let's, I just don't want to hold it up if, if we're holding something up.
Agreed, if, if something formal does come in, I'll, I'll be sure to let you all know.
Uh, the planned unit development visits for Irving Paper and Renovators. We did get a good chance to go to Renovators, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Deb and Moonlight and myself, Mariah and Brian. I think that was everybody that was there. I know this is an area that, you know, David Droll is interested in, I did. Done some pictures to you, Brian, I don't know if those we can look at, or. I, the, and also the PUD map, I guess, would be helpful, I can at least show the area on the PUD map that we, we were looking at. It's coming, there. Can we zoom in on, like, the renovators part of it? Okay. So for. Julian and, uh, and David, the, the PUD is a planned unit development and. Mariah likes to explain it as a campus type of, uh. Development where there's one may, one entrance and one exit, and, uh, then you have more of a campus setting in, within that. Planned unit development. The, the area that we were. I was concerned about quite a bit, originally, all the riverbank was included kinda in the PUD, and then. Mariah and Deb cut it back to where. It was more, uh, buildings. And that two hundred foot section that extends. From the C V. Into the, the white area was the area that we were really, I was really interested in. There are two canals in that area, one that fed a turbine. And one that took the water after went through the turbines back to the Millers. To be quite truthful, I didn't know there was so much development in there, that building is massive, that was back there. I think it's almost twenty-five thousand square feet. I was talking to Brian about it yesterday, or a couple of days ago, and they, they. It used to be owned by Greenfield Community College, they were considering putting a college in there. Is, is that correct, Ryan, you think? I, I don't mean to, to speak.
Uh, what I was saying is, my understanding is, back when the college obviously has been in Greenfield since its, its origination, but. When it was expanding from its very first few locations, and it was looking for a new home. My understanding is that property was one of the properties that they were exploring, and it may have held for a, a little time, this would have been back. Probably late seventies. Um, or early eighties, um, but it's been renovated since the early eighties, so it, that would have been a very long time ago in its history, so.
I can chip in, uh, very briefly on the, on the local history, and I think, um, Moonlight will be interested to. The, when Miller's Falls Tool basically went defunct or moved out of town, a, a number of, uh. Properties down here on what we call a flat, uh, between Warner Street and River Street. Became somehow donated to Greenfield Community College, so they came into possession of the, um. The lots that exist and were afterwards sold, uh, and built on, so a lot of the. What we used to call prefabricated houses on Warner Street and River Street were put into the, um. Section of land between Warner and River. Uh, I hadn't heard a story about the. Back end of what we used to call the lower shop of the, of the Miller's Falls Company property, but. Clearly, it's probably not the best location for the community college, but they may well have come into that as a kind of a. Tax write-off from Ingersoll Rand or whoever took over the Miller's Falls Company.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dave. Uh. I guess I was, you know, again, I was pretty surprised at how big the buildings were in there, I, I, I don't know if the pictures. A couple of them, could we try to bring them up, Brian, if, if you have them that I sent, or?
I'm looking to email if they came through.
Okay, yeah, they would have been resized quite a bit, uh. But. The dimensions of the building, I don't, I, they, it's gotta be. I don't, what would you say, Brian, two hundred feet long or something like that? It's a pretty good-sized building and fifty feet wide.
It's probably a fair estimate. Yeah, it doesn't look, the photos came through to my email, I have all the other emails you sent this week, but I'm not seeing that.
Okay.
Sorry.
They weren't that good, any, so.
Okay.
I had Moonlight in some of them, so I had to edit those out. But, uh. I, I think, David, I, I know you'd like to look at it, but the, I, I was, it, there's a fenced-in area pretty much around those buildings. And, uh, outside of that is, is wetland, so. On the, you know, my, my feeling is we could extend it up to that fence that surrounds that area. Unless you have. Once you get in there to look at it, maybe you'll think something different, I mean, it is right up against the. The wetlands of, of, oh, probably twenty feet from the wetlands, uh, the building itself.
Right. Well, my only important.
Everybody see the email that I had sent to Mariah?
When I asked questions about renovators? Because she gave a really good explanation of about when she responded to me of approximately how far she thinks it needs to be expanded to kind of encase that building and that fenced in area. And I think she might've had a little diagram in there. I don't know if everyone read that.
I, I, I think she read something about 300 feet instead of 200 feet. I don't know if that's what you were thinking. I she wasn't sure that 200 feet would be enough to do it.
Yeah. And she had included, um, let me see. Oh, you don't happen to have that, do you, Brian?
Do you have an approximate date that would have been sent?
Yeah, let me check. Um, you know what? It looks like she included it. If you have the draft agenda for the July 15th meeting that Mariah sent on Monday, the 12th.
Yeah.
I believe it's that PDF email to Deb on renovators.
That would have made sense for me to open that. Let's see. Should be coming up on the screen momentarily. This one right here?
Yes. I just think this is kind of a closer view, Mike, so I think we can see the, that section you're talking about with those buildings a bit better. Cause it's a bit more zoomed in.
So it's white, I think it's the, it would be five dash eight would be the area probably that, well, that's confusing because that canal looks like it's going up into CV a lot more than I thought. Yeah, that, this map is kind of confusing because the lower canal is is where the building, the building is just, you know, 20 feet from that lower canal probably. And then I thought that upper canal stopped pretty close to where the building was, but that's showing it go, go way into CV. I didn't see that.
I meant to ask Mariah about this because on a couple of different maps, on some maps, it actually looks more like a road than a canal.
Technically, Deb.
That part, that part is very confusing.
It, it, it was a road. It wasn't a, a, a river. You remember when we walked back up in there, we walked down a road?
Yes. Yep.
And this, and this way it looks what, looks like the road that we walked up and down, back up into this area over here on the right. And we saw how, how it sort of stopped. I'm concerned about the 300 feet and where that would fit in in relationship to the 200 feet that we had there earlier.
Yeah, this isn't, she didn't send the document, the same thing that she sent me. Let's see.
Is this the one you were talking about?
That's more what I, I remember seeing it to get to where the, those trailers are out in the circled area. That's, that's all our asphalt where the tank was for the building.
So from what I can figure out from Google Maps, what is circled in that red area? If you guys remember when we walked down there, those are those two semi-trailers.
Yep.
And then so we kept going past those trailers aways. And that big building that you're referring to, Mike, and of course, here I am pointing to the map, but it doesn't do you guys any good. That big building is actually almost straight back behind those trailers. So you don't even really see that building on this satellite view. It's totally hidden by the trees.
Oh, okay. Actually, I think that 200 foot marker is the, the old Amadon Building. The, the trees are actually in front of it. I mean, you, you can see the roof on this, but from the ground, all you saw are the trees that are in front of it. And then I think to Deb's point, that 350 foot mark is that back parking lot where there were the semi trucks parked.
Can, can someone point out to me exactly where we walked when we went back up in there? There must be a path in there somewhere.
I'll see if I can find.
Brian, can you go through, down the road? We, first we walked down the road, passed it to the far end. Yeah, that's correct. Keep going towards the pump house from there. I mean.
I don't believe that this satellite photo will give me that further direction. Sort of where that, that measurement dialogue boxes is appearing is where the rest of that structure, what you're referring to, would, would tail end of it would be. But you can see the tail end of Stretching Street. The gates that lead you into the back portion of the parking lot.
And then you walk around here. Yeah, I can see.
The Boiler building is right across from that entry point and then you would head back towards that 200 foot line for the old Amadon Building.
So the road that we walked on is this road that goes by the tank right here on the left. And it veers to the right a little bit and then you follow, yeah, you're following it right around. And we ended it right here.
Ended it. I wish I could make a this, this area that I'm sort of making sort of yellow over here in the far right. That's where you stopped your tour.
Right. The fence is over there somewhere, right in there.
That takes you towards that. There's an easement for the sewer system that heads that way.
Right.
So I think we're back in some sense to the question of can that be considered a CV area and could we use it as Deb, not Deb, as Mariah sort of, you know, we had this conversation about it. Is that area usable?
I mean, I think I, I'm with Mike. I was, I've never been to the renovator's property before, so that's the first time I've ever seen it. Um, I was just shocked at how large that property really is. I never would have expected a property of that size tucked into that area. To me, this has already been developed. It's already is a developed property. It's, you know, it, it's paved. It's the damage has been done. And I think I agree with Mike, if we were to extend both CV and the PUD to that fence line. I think that is what makes the most sense for that area.
Well, I'm not going to disagree with you, Deb. I, it is developed to some point. It could be cleaned up. We, you will admit that there was an enormous amount of junkery in the area. I mean, you gotta.
There was a lot of stuff, that's for sure.
He even said that it has become a, a junk collection site for all his other sites he shut down. So whenever he shuts down a site, they ship everything to Millers or Irving and put it here.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to go through a whole bunch of changes about it, but the truth is I know that most of the community have no idea that that place looks like it does back there. I, I'm, I'm, I'm certain that they thought there would be jaw dropers all over the place. And that's fine. So you think the sewage system.
I might be a little concerned Deb is by where Brian put that yellow thing out to the, you know, that, there wasn't any pavement over there. They were using it kind of to put brush and things. There probably was 50 feet from the end of the building, maybe more, 100 feet. That would be my own, you know, my only area that I'm a little concerned about, but whereas asphalt, I don't have any problem.
I agree, Mike, but I would actually hazard a guess that I bet you if you dug up some of that dirt, there's asphalt under it. I, it didn't look like it was. It looks like it's overgrown vegetation, not like it was nice.
Okay.
I would guess there was probably paved at one time.
And it just got covered over.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it wasn't, it, it was a, 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 a good experience to go back in there because you get an opportunity to see if you put houses back there, for an example, how isolated that could be. For one, and I don't know what the investment would be to clean it up and to make it available for housing or even office space.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd want to be mindful working with someone with a PUD. I have to say, Moonlight, it's kind of interesting because I actually think if that location was cleaned up, I think it would be a beautiful spot for some nice condos. And I personally would love to live back there if it was a night, you know, if it was a nice cleaned up area. That's a beautiful location down there. Even that other building of way in the front that he was talking about, that kind of really long skinny red one, Mike, that we went over and looked at the view off the bank. You know, there's some, it's a beautiful spot down there.
Yeah. Right. That, that is a nice area. Well, David knows it well and Moonlight know it well. They're, they're down there all the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we.
Let me jump in just for one second. So as a member of the Conservation Commission and a neighbor, a butter almost down there. My family goes back five generations, working in the tool shop and right after the Civil War. So we got, I do have some knowledge of that. So as a Conservation Commission person, I would, I have to concede that if you have a footprint that of disturbed land, as Deb has mentioned, then that's a strong point for future cleaning up and doing something with that land. Given that it is so close to a greenway corridor, I would really, really be concerned about any encroachment beyond whatever the renovators, Millers Falls Company survey line is. So, and you would, you know, there would be some serious Conservation Commission intervention if it were to go beyond that footprint. You know, I can't, as a Concom person, I can't I don't have the, the tools to make any kind of decision about the livability or buildability down there. But you know, that's as far as my jurisdiction is concerned, that lower canal that's left is very likely wetlands jurisdictional and certainly the, the, the span going from the edge of that renovator's property up to the DPW garage and all that's incredibly important in terms of wildlife corridor and the greenway that we have. I don't know how many people are aware of this, but we, we now have a fundamentally unbroken greenway from the mouth of the Miller's River all the way up to the, the bridge at Miller's Falls and on both sides of the bank of the river. So it's, it's quite important. It certainly channels in bears up to our neighborhood and deer, but, but you know, that's a slight drawback, but otherwise there, there is that kind of overlay that I would bring. So that's me, the phone ringing here, but that's, that's my, what I, I wanted. I, I'm just, I'm just learning about this and so I appreciate being able to sit in.
Thank you, David. Yeah, we're, we're learning and I think we, I was surprised too how much was in.
Hey, hey, man. Yeah. How are you?
Okay. Um.
In what way?
Right. Until Brian.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Can, Brian, can you mute David, please?
Thank you.
Just did.
Thank you.
Let's go back to the agenda. I, I mean, I, I, maybe we need to get a better map somehow with the buildings on it with the, the dimensions for the next meeting, if we can do that. Okay. The marijuana bylaw updates. That, that would be going back to the minutes that I put out, Brian, from eight May, I guess it was with, with Mariah's table in there.
So you want that back on the screen?
Yeah, if you could, please. That was the one I did. Think it was May. No, April. Yeah. I don't know. Yeah, this one. So we, for retail stores, buildings greater than 25,000 square feet, we said, of course, I didn't copy over what the headers were on these, but I think it goes Central Village, Village Residential. Any help, Deb? The last one would be Rural.
If you give me a moment, I can pull that up for you all.
Is it CV? Oh, I don't have my book right here either.
VR.
Yeah, I don't remember what order. I want to say it starts with CV, then goes to VR. Rural, Rural is last. I think. Don't quote me on that. I'm totally guessing.
I don't remember the third one or the fourth. That's pretty sad.
I don't remember it either.
I'm going to use the excuse that I was out in the sun all day, so my brain is fried from the sunshine.
You look a little pinkish.
Thanks.
You're in front of us for getting red, so I don't know.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not asking you guys for getting red. It's just that my wife scared me. You know, I have not seen people that red. I'm sorry, Brian. So are we going to make a decision about this? So what are we going to do?
I think, yeah, I think we could look at, but we need to know what the headers are, I think, so we can educate ourselves a little bit.
Should be on the screen in just a moment.
But I do see some discrepancies, just, you know, looking through it quick.
My only concern is, Mike, just looking back um, we were all wrong, guys.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm looking at it.
If you used one at one meeting when Mariah had presented the, the chart to us, at the end, we had kind of been going through and we felt things weren't looking lined up and weren't in the right, that yeses were no's now and no's were yeses. And we realized that two columns had completely been shifted.
Yeah.
So my only concern is if you copied it off of what Mariah presented, was that accidental shift corrected?
Yeah, it was. That was why she, she sent it out after the meeting. She cut and pasted the two together in a screenshot. That was the only way. So it's Central Village, French King, that's what we forgot and, and Village Residential.
We all forget French King.
And then Rural Residential. Okay. So now we I thank you, Brian. So in the, the retail, we said we could do it in commercial Central Village and then SP and French King and then no in Village Residential and Rural Residential. Retail stores greater than 5,000 feet, we said you could do it with a special permit in Central Village and no anywhere else. Retail marijuana product stores and related paraphernalia, paraphernalia and, including edibles up to 5,000 square feet, special permit in Central Village, French King, but no in Village Residential and Rural Residential.
So can I just ask, if we're going to let everything else be special permit in French King, why would we not let a retail store greater than 5,000 be? A retail store greater than five thousand be special permit in French King as well?
That's what I'm trying to get to. Yeah, I agree with you. We should probably.
Okay.
Make that, uh, no, uh, an SP for, uh, retail store. And then, uh, the consumption establishment, we said SP and. Uh, Central Village and French King, but no in Village Residential and. The, if anybody disagrees with anything, please. Say something, but this is what I, I think we agreed to and then.
You know, and what, what is the, let me, I'm watching the line. On the third line over, I see no all the way down the line except for one SP.
No, that would be Village Residential, which is. Uh, fairly close to what Central Village is, but. It's not as business oriented, I think is the difference between there. They kind of rate, Doug knows it better than I do, but they kind of come right next to each other in a lot of areas.
So Village Residential was designed to be more of our family neighborhoods.
Okay.
Um, and Central is more to be where we would. Where we would hope businesses would tend to establish. So it's not quite so neighborhoody like, you know. I wouldn't necessarily want a large building, building up here on High Street because it's a very, you know, this is, it's a neighborhood.
Right. But you wouldn't mind it, uh, around renovated supplies area.
Correct. Sorry. You can have it.
That you like, or what is another area where you would mind large buildings?
Um, I think, you know, depending on how it is done, anywhere in Central Village, I, I think would be fine. Um, the French King District, I think, is a good spot for it. Um, there's already, you know, some development over there. If the hotel was ever to change hands or, you know, something like that. Um, I think that's kind of the areas. I mean, I. I have a pipe dream that we're gonna see the IP mill turn into some great, amazing place, so.
I hope not shopping mall.
No, I don't think you gotta worry about that. Uh.
So I mean, I was concerned because as I went down the list, it said marijuana, uh, medical marijuana treatments in it. I'm not even sure what that means. Other than, than a marijuana distributor.
It is a distributor, I think, is a, a, a medical marijuana distributor and, uh. So we said that that would be by special permit in Central Village. And French King, but no in Village Residential and no in Rural Residential. We did allow indoor cultivation of medical or recreational marijuana across the board by special permit.
And delivery.
I, I guess we didn't do the delivery only retailer. Uh, no, we have it in there twice.
Right.
Uh, so yeah, those lines don't need to, she's, she, she did, or I. Anyhow, those, those are duplicates, those two, uh.
Microbusiness is also not built in.
Yeah, it's above, it's up, the second one down in red is, is, uh, she just. They're duplicates that we don't need to do. Uh. See, those two are above.
I just, I. I have to say marijuana microbusinesses, I. I would think. I don't know. I, I'm torn. I, I personally feel America, uh, a microbusiness and a delivery only. Should be special permit in Village Residential. Those are small, small businesses. They're not huge establishments.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
A microbusiness would be like.
Delivery by the car.
I thought the micro business was two thousand pounds a year processing. It was, I mean, it's pretty substantial. I mean, it's, it's not, it doesn't have to be that big, but. You could go up, I think that was, I was surprised how much you could process and still be called a microbusiness. But.
And I, and I guess this is the part, because I, I, I own it, the, the actual like growing processing of marijuana, I really don't know a lot about. It's just not my thing. Um. It's my understanding that to make like one batch of salve, you need quite a lot of the, the leaf or the plant to cook down. Um, so I, I think. Two thousand pounds sounds like a lot, but I think in essence, when they're actually doing and producing their products, it isn't. It actually isn't. Which, at least that's the understanding I have, which is why I'm, I am comfortable saying I think it could be in, I, I could see this being a home business in someone's home.
Like, you know, I, I, Deb, I, you know, I'm with you all the way, hon. But, um, first of all, I want to say to you that. Two thousand pounds. Is a big sum. Big, 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 big. Okay, it's not a little bitty nothing. I mean, I mean, a pound. Is big by itself, but you add one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine more to that and you say, whoa. So that comes in with an odor, it comes in with a large distillery to sort of process it, the whole thing with. And I am certain that you're gonna get some frooms somewhere coming from that. And if it's in a residential kind of area. Then that may be the offensive place that we should think about. If it was in a business. And the residents didn't mind, like if it came into renovated supplies. And as long as it, the, the air flowed in a direction that the neighbors didn't have to smell it. Then it may work, but the minute the neighbors start complaining about the odor. It would make it difficult for that business to be in even a semi-residential area.
Sure, and I get that, Moon. I guess I'm thinking more it would be special permit and I, I, I guess that's a really great point. I just. Personally wouldn't, I guess I didn't think someone would have two thousand pounds sitting in their house. It would be more small batch, like, okay, I'm gonna make, you know, make my salve or my whatever. Um, and so a hundred pounds that I'm processing at this time, I wasn't looking at it from the standpoint of, hey, I've got two thousand pounds of marijuana in the basement. Which I think, I think that's why personally I'd like to see the flexibility of special permit for that.
Okay, I'll go with the special permit and I think each one of those situations should be really examined by us.
Yeah. So those are the. I was saying, special permit in Rural Residential for those two as well.
Okay. I go with you.
For which two now, the, uh.
Microbusiness and the delivery retailer.
Well, the special permit is already with delivery.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
We're gonna cross off the last one down the bottom, but yes, we could change it to top. Uh, to, uh, the, the, the number three to, uh, special permit, make it special permit across the board.
The second one down, right in red, the marijuana microbusiness change, make that all the way across that.
SP, yes. But you gotta remove the two at the bottom because we don't need it twice.
Right, right. Yeah, well, we can, right, good. So do we want to make a motion to accept that table as amended? Do we feel that comfortable with it?
I feel okay with it. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of doing some of Deb's leading, but I like it. I, I like the idea of special permit and I agree with her. That I'd like to have a little more control over the situation when it comes time for us to make a decision about it. So yeah, I, I would say yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the table as amended where we were gonna change N to special permit. Uh, for the French King on the retail stores and then change. No to special permit for marijuana microbusinesses for. Uh, what was that, Rural Residential? I believe.
Yeah.
For Village Residential.
Village Residential, Village Residential. Thank you, Deb. Anybody second it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Moon, aye.
Deb, aye.
Son, he aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. Thank you. That's good. Get that done. We're moving along, Brian. How are we doing for time? Eight thirty?
Yep, you, about an hour and a half in.
Okay, uh, can we go back to the agenda, please? Uh. I'd like to table the, uh, next two things until the next meeting. The, these are the. Rather, the site plans, we, some of the things we've included in low, uh. Well, David Brule's here, I'd like his in, input if he would like to give some on any of these, but. Uh, well, one of the things that Mariah would, had brought up is putting in low impact storm water runoff to help reduce. Uh, I don't have that worded right, but it's more like putting stones in, uh, in, in gardens that help. Take the water in rather than having it just. Go down the, uh, the, the side of the road or, or something like that. She wanted to make sure the number of copies and a digital copy were included in there. Uh. This came out of the large solar array or, uh, site plans. We want to have, uh, a Native American surveys or somebody look to make sure that. Any archaeological, uh, things could get destroyed. When they were working on these projects. When the solar arrays are done or another big project are done, we want to have pollinators. And I put around the edges of the, the, the solar field. And for special permit section, number of copies. Uh, extent, one thing that happened with Jackie's project was it. I think the special permit was only good for two years. And now they've extended it, or maybe it was only one year, but now I believe it's up to three years. You can have a special permit. So we want to extend that time to the maximum. And, uh, anything else that needs to come up? I did get some business cards. Thanks, Brian, and, uh. Then. Uh, Dave, could I ask if anybody has, I don't get David on the phone, on the conference calls much, if he's still there. If he has any other things he, he thinks we need to include to look at.
From the meeting, Mike.
Okay.
I, I would just, I, I don't mind, uh, uh, passing it, but I would like to, to know more about the Native American surveys.
Okay.
I mean, you know, just as a, as an information. And the pollinators, I mean, can we talk about someone's property? I mean, I go down sixty-three all the time and I see in front of Jackie's place that they're growing some trees there to sort of. Hide the paneling in the back. Is that what you're talking about, pollinators?
Uh, those are, some of those are blueberry bushes that, which are pollinators. They planted around the fence. Yeah. It can be bushes, it could be flowers, it could be. Uh, it's not really for screening the, the, uh. In that case, the blueberry bushes do help screen it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be, um, a, a screen. It could be. A lot of things.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking, because I think that when you do something natural with it, it sort of helps it. Melt itself into the environment rather than just to leave it there with a fence around it or something.
Right.
So for all these, even in the future, pollination should be a part of the, the con. The consideration when you're putting in so, those panels.
Well, yeah, and, and rather than just limiting it to solar panels, if we move it to the site plan. If there was another big project, uh, you know, that took up acres of land. You, you could, you could ask for pollinators to be, um. Put around the, the buildings or whatever they're gonna do. So I, I, I'm trying to pull it out of the solar array and make it, that was Jackie's. Recommendation before she left was to include these things in the site plan. So they apply to all projects, not just solar projects.
I like it. What do you guys think?
I think it sounds good. I, I'd have to learn a bit more about the Native American surveys. To me, that feels more like a Conservation Commission. Item rather than a planning board item. Um. And I'd wanna, I mean, I, like the low impact storm water, maybe we can ask Mariah if she can send us some info on that, because I would just like to see like, what is she talking about? I know, um, from the library project, like we did catch basins. Um, you know, so is it something like that? Is, is that what she's meaning or is it something more aesthetic? Uh, a little bit more information there and I'm a huge gardening nerd, so pollinators, 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 I'm all for it.
Okay, nice. Maybe we could ask David to speak more about the. The Native American surveys. I, I know a little bit about it. At the French King, they dug pits, I think. By wherever they thought there would be. Okay, there, there are a couple different levels of artifacts. One are from the hunters and they were more like they'd move around and you might find a fire pit. And then you'll find other areas where the villages were, where you'll see they cooked and, and. And that, those are more, uh, and then, then you go up to like graveyard, uh, you know, burial grounds. That's the most sacred. So they kind of have a hierarchy. And, uh, they dig pits, uh, at the French King, they dug pits that around water sources, looking for signs of villages and they didn't find any. At Jackie's, uh, they'd already started construction, so they had a, a guy come out from, uh, Boston and actually watch them dig the. They had to dig some pretty good. Channels. I think they were about five feet wide, six feet deep. So when they were digging those. He was there watching to see if they brought up any artifacts. They found some. I think charcoal and maybe one, one thing there, but nothing, you know. Really unusual, but David could give you more information on that, so.
I think my biggest concern with that, Mike, is I'm all for it. I, I, I believe it should be done. I just, I always look at when we do this kind of stuff, you know, five years down the road, ten years down the road. And I'm just concerned if it's something that Concom requires and it's something that planning requires, like if both boards say it has to be done. Down the road, could there be confusion on a project if? For example, you know, something was found and we said, well, that is not of relevance, you may move forward. And then if Concom required it and they said, well, that is of relevance, you cannot move forward. Could it create conflict? So I would just want clarification. I know on the French King project, it was actually the Concom who requested it and on Jackie's project, it was us. So I, I would just want to make sure that it's nestled under the proper board. And it, to me, that feels more like it's conservation, so I would, my gut said it would be more of a Conservation Commission area. So that's, that's, I mean, I, I firmly believe it should be done. It's just who's actually overseeing it.
Yeah, well, we could. We can spend more time on that next time. And in the site plan, it does say we need to, uh, not adversely affect the cultural. I, I don't, can't remember, you know, there are. Things in there that affect, that go to that.
Yeah.
Area, so we can look at it.
Okay, I just. Add one piece of information?
Yeah.
There may just be a little, well, there's a lot of overlap. Uh, so many of you wear many hats. Um, David Brule is also your Archaeological Preservation Officer. So the town adopted several years ago an archaeological. So the town adopted several years ago an archaeological preservation policy. Um, so it's not a bylaw, but it is a, a policy for how we are to conduct some of that work. Um, and, and David and Sid Scott until recently was also an officer, so um, the, I believe when that requirement for those projects, the two solar projects to have a review, um, Sid and David at the time, uh, were part of overseeing that along with uh, these conditions. So it may be something where you, if, if you meet with David, you can tie it back to the policy on how they handle archaeological preservation activities.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
But I have a, I want to go back to the, the Native American survey for a minute and sort of tied it in with Deb was saying about who does the authority to do this fall on? And I'm sort of with her in the sense that maybe it should be a, a ComCom thing and not a planning board thing. Is that what you're saying, Deb?
I just, I, yes and no, Moonlight. I just want to make sure it's under the right board's purview. I think, you know, for me, it's something that's important and so I would just hate to see it be overlooked or missed. And my gut says it's a conservation type act, so I, I think it should be with the Conservation Commission. I feel like they are the ones who are kind of the experts on that and would know more and be the appropriate people to say, yes, this is something of significance. Um, or no, it's not, or they would at least know the proper people to contact if something was found. Where I don't necessarily think we on planning do.
Alright.
And I, and I also want to make sure we're not stepping on their toes. If this is supposed to be a Concom, you know, task isn't the right word, but you know what I'm getting at. I want to make sure we're not stepping on their toes and taking on something that, you know, is, is theirs.
Okay, so what about the pollinators? I have a feeling about that, that belongs, it belongs to the planning board.
I would agree, because I, I think we have, we within many of our site plans say, you know, you have to do screening or you have to do this, or I remember in the marijuana bylaw, we talked about, um, you know, businesses had to do like screening of hedges or things like that. So I definitely think making a, a business or so, you know, whomever include native plants in their plans is important. So I, yeah, I think that falls to us.
Right. What do you think, Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. I agree with everybody. Just as long as it doesn't fall through the cracks, that's the main thing. So I, I did talk to the past, before Jackie, Bill Morris about how he would make changes to the zoning bylaws. And he recommended bringing one thing at a time to the town. And I, I tend to agree with him. I mean, we, we'll, we'll, we can get Donna in here, but some of these things are fairly complicated, like the puds and the auxiliary dwelling units and I, I think if we do more than one, it's going to be overwhelming for people. So we, I, we're making a progress. At least we got the marijuana table done today and uh, hopefully we'll get a couple more. That's another one that would be almost a standalone thing to take to town. So uh, we, we need to figure out how we want to do these things.
Yeah, well, we should talk about that one a little bit more because I would imagine, and forgive me for my thoughts, but I think a lot more people in general are smoking and using marijuana products than I think more, if we took a survey, I think that many of us would be surprised of how many, you know, people are into the marijuana in one way or the other. And so we need to talk about how we cannot offend people and yet give people an opportunity to, to deal a little bit with at least how they feel about it. Because we really don't know how the citizens of Irving feel about it. Do you think so, Deb? Do you think that you know, Sunhee?
I just know that overwhelmingly Irving, when the, the votes came to, to make it legal, um, if I am remembering correctly from what Jackie told us, Irving overwhelmingly voted in support of it. So I, you know, I, I, I think people would be, would still feel that way. That's my, that's my guess.
So I don't think it'd be that hard, Mike. I mean, I think it'd be hard for those hard people that, that show up, but I think that in general, that if we made sense of what we were doing with this, I think that they would go along with it and they wouldn't have that much trouble with it all. But you know, you're going to have those people that contradict and don't like anything, so we're going to have to deal with them.
A special permit gives everybody a chance to voice their oppositions and uh, I think that's a good thing, so.
I do.
All right, um.
Can, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interject. Uh, one thing that I do need to bring in front of the four of you is a um, you may be aware that the town clerk has been working on the town code project. Uh, about two years ago, the voters approved funding to take all of the bylaws that we've adopted since the creation of the town and, and formulate them into a town code. Uh, basically, you're going to take every bylaw that was adopted and give it chapter and sections. Obviously, one of the, the living complex bylaws you have is the zoning bylaw. So the vendor has heard a proposal for putting all the bylaws into chapters and sections and they have returned a proposal to turn your zoning bylaw into chapters and sections. It sounds a, a little bureaucratic in, in nature. Um, but it would still require, to take that to town meeting, it would still require the planning board to review it, to conduct a public hearing on it and to uh, support bringing that to town meeting before it actually could be presented and included in a town code. So the town clerk has asked if I can work with the four of you to go over the proposed structure. Again, it's, it's bureaucratic. It's just putting chapters and sections to your, your bylaw. And, and get your feedback on it and to see if you're, if you'd be willing to support that and proceed to a public hearing. Uh, so that he can move forward with the overall town project.
What's the timeline, Brian?
Well, in, in the perfect world, we were hoping to get this ready for this past annual town meeting. COVID put a, a, a complete halt to most of our plans on that, so uh, the town clerks has started to put more energy behind this project in the last month. So I've been getting the relevant sections of the bylaws out to all the relevant departments and boards and commissions. Um, with the goal that we would get some feedback to him for this fall. Hopefully, maybe we can get things ready for the next annual town meeting.
Which is?
Annual town meeting will be in May of twenty-two. Maybe a need to do some of this at a special town meeting this winter, just to get ready for that. But I can, I can pull together, it's all in PDF, so I can pull together what has been presented and I can send it to the four of you uh, for your future review.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's the first I've heard about it, Brian.
Okay.
Okay, so next meeting is Thursday, August nineteenth. Would we want to try to do this uh, at the library? Would that be, I haven't been to the library yet, so.
You haven't? Oh, you gotta go see it. Really nice. That's your handiwork, Deb, isn't it?
Part of it. It was part of a really great group that did that.
I, I really, I really enjoyed the library. It's nice. I took my grandkids to it.
Oh, no.
Right? So it was nice. Yes, we could do it, Debbie, when.
Wouldn't everybody else like that, or, or?
Sounds good.
All right, so our next meeting, Brian, if possible, will be seven o'clock, August nineteenth at the library.
Enough notice and reminder that we're not going to do Zoom no more, folks. Because obviously here at home on my Zoom, wondering where you guys are. I'm sorry, you know, I'm sort of slow about this, you know?
You're not the only one, Moonlight, because I would do the same thing.
Alright.
Mike will be texting us at seven oh five going, where are you two?
Where, what, what are you doing? Sunhee, you know you'd be in trouble.
I'll be there. Library sounds great.
All right, so we'll make a motion to adjourn. Anybody second at eight forty-six?
Somebody seconded.
Who, who, which one?
I did, I did, Sunny.
Okay, done.
All in favor?
Sunny, aye.
Hi. Mike, aye. You're naming us.
Thank you. What time was it, Mike?
Eight forty-six.
Eight forty-six, okay.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you all being here.
Thanks.
Thank you and thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. And Sunhee, it's so nice to see you, darling.
Great to see you. Great to see everyone.
You were quiet and I was worried about it, but.
Yeah. Listening and taking notes.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye.
Night out.
Bye.